That one's on. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for coming tonight. David Miller, Chairman of the Village Planning Board, myself, Chairman of the Town Planning Board, we are now opening the joint public hearing on the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park as required by the Intermunicipal Agreement. I have an opening statement I'd just like to read to you to sort of let you know what we're doing here tonight and why we're doing it. The subject of this evening's joint hearing by the Town and Village Planning Boards is the site plan for development of the first phase of the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park. The site plan for development of the first phase of the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park has as its foundation the master plan for the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park recommended by the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park Committee, I'll say TTSM from now on, and adopted by the Town Board following issues with a negative declaration under SEACR on June 8th, 2009. The matters under consideration this evening are only those within the purview of the planning boards generally being the appropriateness of both the engineering and architectural design and construction details for the proposed improvements and the status of related permits and approvals by county and/or state agencies and the measures proposed to protect the environment during both and beyond the construction period. Comments on the appropriateness of the engineering and architectural design and construction details for the proposed improvements and the measures proposed to protect the environment during both and beyond the construction period are openly invited. Your comments will be helpful to the planning boards in deciding the site plan, wetlands, and related special permit applications before the boards. On the other hand, it should be recognized any comment that might be made this evening on the master plan for the TTSM park as adopted by the Town Board will have been made before the wrong agencies. The Town and Village Planning Boards neither initially adopted nor have the planning board's authority to modify the master plan. The Town Planning Board did however review the potential environmental effects of the proposed master plan for the TTSM park at the request of the Town Board in April/May 2009, and did then advise the Town Board of its opinion that no significant adverse environmental effects would be caused if the then-proposed and since-adopted master plan were implemented. The only authority the planning boards have at this time is to review and decide in accordance with the criteria set forth in the Town and Village Codes, the site plan, wetlands, and related special permit applications for the undertaking of improvements proposed by the TTSM Park Committee to carry out the master plan. We ask you respectfully listen to the Park Committee's presentation and upon its conclusion direct any questions or comments you may have concerning the site plan for the development of the first phase of the TTSM park through either Chairman David or myself. As stated in the notice of public hearing, your questions or comments will be limited to three minutes in duration until all who wish to be heard have been given an initial opportunity. Once that opportunity occurs, additional questions or comments pertinent to this public hearing within the context of the authority of the Town and Village Planning Boards will be entertained. So you understand, we will be cutting off this meeting tonight, recessing it I should say, at 10:00 PM. We will be continuing this public hearing to a time and date to be determined later this evening, so you're all aware of when it is. The Town Board, the Town of Rhinebeck Board is the lead agency under SEACR. Neither our planning board in the town or the village can make the SEACR determination. The Town Board has to do that. We'll be making a recommendation to them, but at one of their regularly scheduled meetings they have to actually make the SEACR determination because we cannot close the public hearing until the SEACR determination is made because that has to be done so we have actually complete applications for the different permits before us, just so you understand that if everyone doesn't get to speak tonight to say what they want to say, this will not be the last opportunity. We do have to continue this public hearing, and we will be announcing that time and date and place tonight before everyone leaves. So with that, David, I don't know if there's anything you could add?
No, that's fine.
And we'd like to hear from the Park Committee, the presentation, the consultants they've hired on some of the specific aspects of the implementation plan will also be presenting to you tonight, and we will be certainly inviting your comments on the things you're going to be hearing tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Sally Mazzarella and I'm a member of the Park Committee. I apologize, I've had some eye surgery and my vision is a little blurry, so I have some large notes in front of me. First, I'm going to start with highlighting the history of the property because I realize that there are many people that are not aware of how this 72 acres became part of the town park. I'll talk about some of the funding, so there's clarification on that, and the public participation that we had throughout the process. So in the mid to late 1990s, this 72-acre parcel of land which was adjacent to the town and village pool was proposed for a major development. There were close to 300 residential units that were being proposed with a small commercial component that was going to be used for the day-to-day needs of the people that lived in this new neighborhood. Of course, there was a great deal of community discussion and concern, and a group of citizens met to determine if this land was important to the community for open space protection and recreational purposes. And of course, because it was adjacent to the town pool, its proximity to the village, it made a great deal of sense. However, this group of people met with a lot of community groups, met with local government, recreational clubs, and the general public. So this was something that they reached out to the community to make a determination if this property was important, and it was decided that saving the land was in the best interest of the community. So over several years, I worked with the Town Board and the Village Board to discuss how we would go about the acquisition of the property. There were a number of trips that were made to New York City to talk to the developers. As you know, a lot of negotiations went on because it wasn't easy for the developers to give up this proposal. They came up with a cost of about $1 million for the property, and of course, we felt it was too high a price, and finally did negotiate on an $800,000 cost for the acquisition. I was asked if I would go out and find the funds to create the pool of dollars so that way the town could acquire the property. And the first group I went to was Dutchess County Planning and Development because they had an open space and farmland protection bond that they were using, and this bond was really for the protection of open space and farmland, and we had this recreational component that made sense because it was adjacent to other recreational lands that we had. So it took a lot of discussion to convince the county that we felt this was important because parts of this land would be used as open space and farmland, and that we would find a way to have it coexist, that you can have recreational lands, farmlands, and open space. And so the county did agree to a $280,000 bond with the condition that the town and village had to match those funds. So both the town and the village put in $135,000 each. We went to the Thomas Thompson Trust and tried to convince them because the library was adjacent to this site, that it made sense that the community have this land for open space and recreation. I don't remember how much money I asked them for, but they did agree to $200,000. So we had a shortfall of about $50,000, and the Dyson Fund contributed to that effort, and they closed the gap. So following the purchase, you know, we worked with the Reinsen Partners who owned the property and went through the closing, and the Town Board felt it was important to formalize this effort and appoint a committee that would be responsible for the planning of the park. And there were two representatives from the village, two representatives from the town, there was a member of the Winnicke Land Trust, which I represent. The Winnicke Land Trust is responsible for the easement on this property, and you'll hear from Lucy Hayden in a little while who will talk about the responsibility of that easement, which helps to clarify the open space, farmland, and recreational components of the site. Joe Fallon, who's the superintendent of schools, many of you know, he played a very important role because we were able to better understand what the school had as facilities, what they were proposing for the future, and how we can partner and share our fields, and so Joe was very, very valuable. And of course, Bruce Washburn, who served as liaison for many, many years. So that's how this committee was structured, and of course, we felt that to move ahead, a master plan would be needed, that we couldn't haphazardly develop this park, that we needed a master plan to know exactly where we were headed in the future. With the help of a local architect, we worked on an RFP and went out to planning consultants, park consultants. We interviewed some five firms and hired the LA Group, and they are recognized throughout the state for park development and planning. They worked with us on community workshops, community surveys, they did a recreational needs assessment, looking at the inventory and analysis of what existed in Rhinebeck and also the adjacent communities. And of course, we spent a lot of time talking to the school athletic director. This input helped us develop a concept plan, which we then brought back to the community again and said, based on that input, we have a concept plan again, meeting with the community groups, the focus groups, environmental groups, recreational groups, school representatives, and a number of public meetings, and that list goes on. So the master plan then was developed, and it also had a public process. We had public hearings, and it was finally at the point where it could be approved by the town and the village. And what you're going to see tonight is that master plan that went through several planning processes to get to that point. One of the interesting things that happened during this process, we learned that portions of this parkland had archaeological-sensitive areas and needed an analysis by a professional archaeologist. We worked with New York State Parks and Recreation and Historic Preservation, SHIPO, they are the New York State Agency that oversees archaeology, and it took a year and a half to work through this process to help define and delineate the area that had this archaeological-sensitive findings. Artifacts, it was amazing, artifacts over 5,000 years old were found on the site. So there was a good and a bad piece to this. We looked at the educational opportunities that we could take advantage of. I know during the summer, our archaeologists did digs, and we invited the camp kids to come and work at the digs. We invited high school kids, and we see in the future, working with the Science Foundation, on other educational programs. So those are some of the benefits, but what happened was this extraordinary finding warranted a redefining of the recreational areas. We had to change locations, we had to change the size and number of athletic fields. And so during this one and a half years, we really had to change our focus because of this unique and outstanding resource in the community. So what you're going to see and hear tonight is really the results of many years of challenges and planning, which represents the ideas and needs of a very diversified community. Of course, a project of this nature costs a lot of money, and we are very, very fortunate. We went back to the Thomas Thompson Trust, and we convinced them that they should be a part of this project since they helped with the acquisition, that we wanted them to help with the planning, and would they participate? They had pledged $300,000 over four years. We are very fortunate that the Frost Fund has designated $100,000 specifically towards the trail network, which is absolutely amazing on this property. It is around the perimeter of the park and meanders throughout the park. It's two and a quarter miles, and there is some over 12,000 lineal feet of trails, and thanks to Benson and Barbara Frost and their contribution to this community, that this trail network will reach a reality. There was the Dutchess County block grant money. We have received $100,000 for a handicapped accessible restroom pavilion, and that needs a match from the town of $100,000. And so the town also has a parkland fund, over $200,000. These funds are from developers who are developing subdivision lots, and what's required by law is that they give a certain amount of money for each lot that they're creating, and this is mandated, and it's for capital use of recreational and park development. That is the purpose of this recreational fund. So the Park Committee has now been incorporated, and thanks to Herman Teigen, who worked pro bono, we have submitted our papers for a 501(c)(3) status to help raise funds to complete the public amenities of the park. In closing, I'd like to state on behalf of the committee that our community park was never meant to serve any one constituency, but instead to be used as a gathering place for children and families, people of all ages, to share an experience with the outdoors, whether to hit a ball, take a dip on a real hot day, plant a vegetable in flower garden, fly a kite, play frisbee, hike in a pristine forest, see an outdoor movie, or hear a local concert, or simply read a book under an old oak tree. The committee is working with grant writers, and I think I'm out of order here, and I I guess what I wanted to say earlier was that we are working with a grant writer to continue our fundraising efforts, and actually, as of October 1st, we're submitting a grant to the United States Soccer Grant, United States Soccer Grant application for a turf field that's been proposed on the project. So we're going to continue to raise those funds. So as I mentioned, all of the recreational opportunities, I want to say that the proposed park plan provides for enjoyment of these diversified park amenities while paying homage to our Rhinebeck heritage of honoring open space and farmland as a legacy for future generations to enjoy. Thank you very, very much. I'm going to ask Lucy Hayden, who's the executive director of the Winnicke Land Trust. She has a statement that she's going to make, and I'm going to have to change the height of this. You have to adjust this.
Chair, out of your way. No, I'm fine without it, thank you. Hi, everyone. As Sally said, I'm Lucy Hayden with Winnicke Land Trust, and I'm just going to focus my comments briefly on Winnicke's role in this park and the conservation easement that was established there in perpetuity. I want to thank the committee for all the work that you've done. I know Bob Ellsworth isn't here tonight, and as Sally said, many years of work and public process went into the result that we have tonight. Thank you for that and for this public hearing. Winnicke holds an easement on the land at the Thompson Mazzarella Park. Sally, you know, as she mentioned, on behalf of Winnicke negotiated the purchase of that land when it was threatened with development, bringing together all those funding sources that she spoke about. The money from the Dutchess County, from Dutchess County came from the Farmland and Open Space Protection Fund, and that was almost $300,000 of the $800,000 that was granted. I have here, which I'll submit to the planning board as part of my comments, the criteria for qualifying for that fund. There are 19 criteria covering inclusion in a regional trail system, protection of scenic view shed, protection of watershed or aquifer, wild habitat protection, soil quality, location near critical farmland, continuity of a farm operation, importance to the rural character of the community, and imminent threat from development. Among those 19 criteria, there is one line regarding recreation and public access. This is a scored system, and so you can see from that that the money that was granted by Dutchess County for the park really was qualified by all of those myriad interests, the natural assets of the land, and the protection of those natural assets, and the farm neighboring. So it's important to recognize that really this wouldn't have come about without recognizing the value of those assets to the community. In helping the, in helping the community protect the land from development, the county recognized the value of protecting the natural and agricultural assets for the public benefit. The community garden is a use that dovetails really well with these goals. The trail system is another. The planned viewing pavilion is another, and protecting the banks of the Rhinebeck Hill is another. Active sports, of course, is very important as well, but bringing people closer to nature and agriculture and to the scenic vistas is very important to the physical and mental health of the community. Going forward, Winnicke's role is to review specific aspects of the park's development, such as the proposed restroom and concession stand building that you'll see as part of the plan tonight. We have an easement committee that meets monthly that reviews things like the trail placement, like the building that will be built, and eventually the community center when we get to that point. In reviewing, we look at the easement language itself, and the easement is, in the language itself, which I do have here to give to the planning boards, you have reference to that, is, the use is to preserve the active and passive recreation and the natural assets. At one point, when the county money was given to Winnicke Land Trust, we did have assigned easement in place, and that was amended to remove the library use from the conservation easement. They didn't want to see a mention of that because that particular fund, the Open Space and Farmland Protection Fund, didn't cover library uses. So rather, we had to remove those references and focus just on the active and passive recreation and the protection of natural assets. So I know that some of you have heard about that amendment, and I just want to clarify what the purpose of that amendment was. So I have, I have those, that wording, if you care to see it. I'll leave it here. So the trails and other areas for passive recreation are essential park assets highlighted in the easement document, and while active recreation is also very important, the protection of the natural assets is paramount in the park's establishment and the park's purpose. And just to make that point, I want to quote from the easement itself, which says, "Active outside recreational uses are permitted provided the design, layout, and materials are consistent with the use and character of the site as preserved open space." So Winnicke's involvement here, usually we don't protect land on a town park with ball fields, but our role here is a lot bigger than that, and those other natural assets of the park are really at the heart of our role going forward. So thank you very much.
My name is Ted Fink, and I'm helping the committee with some of the site plan review requirements that the Town Planning Board has required, and that includes the preparation of a traffic impact study as well as a fiscal impact analysis. And so what I'd like to do is just give you a little bit of a background on the work that went into the preparation of both of those studies. The traffic study was prepared by Fitzpatrick and Associates. It's a traffic engineering firm headed by a fellow by the name of Bill Fitzpatrick. He's a licensed civil engineer and a certified professional traffic operations engineer. And what he did, he looked at three primary aspects of traffic as it affects the entrance of the proposed new park entrance onto Rhine Cliff Road. He looked at, first of all, sightlines, and these are the so-called sight distances that are necessary in order to have safe ingress and egress from the access onto Rhine Cliff Road. And what traffic engineers do is they actually, they measure the distance upon which a car exiting the access can see a car that's either eastbound or westbound on Rhine Cliff Road to make sure that based upon the speed limit that is in effect in that area, that there's sufficient stopping distance in order to avoid an accident. So he looked at the sightlines. He also looked at the operating speeds because even though there's a posted speed limit right in front of the park of 30 miles an hour, traffic engineers also want to know how safe is it, are people actually traveling at 30 miles an hour? So he went out and actually did a radar study along Rhine Cliff Road, and he found that based upon the sightlines that are currently, or that will be available at the proposed access, that they do meet traffic engineering standards, and there will be sufficient stopping sight distance for the operating speeds along that area. And in that regard, one of the things that we had discussed with him and he had recommended was that we approached the New York State Department of Transportation. They're the agency that has to approve any change in traffic speed limits, even though they have to approve everything, whether it's a town road, a county road, or a state road. And so the town and, the town approached the New York State DOT. They asked them to extend the 30 mile an hour limit as you head towards Rhine Cliff because right now, there's a 45 mile an hour limit until you get to the village boundary. And so we wanted to extend that almost as far as the town highway garage. The DOT turned us down on that, but one of the things that they did do was they installed a 30 mile an hour speed limit ahead sign. So if you're, you're coming into the village and coming towards the park from Rhine Cliff, you'll now see that there's a new sign that's been installed out there just a few weeks ago that does warn motorists that there is an approaching 30 mile an hour distance, you better slow down. So, so that was another aspect of it. He also looked at, he did an accident analysis. He looked at actual reports of accidents, and the county is a source of that data. Any accidents that are reported in the area have to go into a database, and he found that there was no prevailing accident history or unusual circumstances that would, would lead to, to this being an accident-prone area. So that's pretty much what he did in his traffic study. We have a full study that's available. It was submitted to the Town Planning Board. It's part of the public record, so if anybody wants to see it, I have a copy with me tonight, but I'd be happy to provide that to anyone that wishes to see that study. There was another, one other aspect that he did recommend was that when the proposed entrance is cited on Rhine Cliff Road, that there be a park ahead sign installed so that motorists are aware that there is a park there, that there's turning vehicles, that there may be times when there's a lot of activity at the park, and there may be, may be a lot of traffic coming and going. So that was, that was pretty much the work that Mr. Fitzpatrick did, and his conclusion was that there would be no impact on current operating conditions along Rhine Cliff Road based upon the additional development that, that has been proposed as, as part of the park expansion plans. So that's the traffic study, and the other study that was conducted was a fiscal impact analysis. And it wasn't a traditional fiscal impact analysis as that has been defined by, by the, by the planning and economic professions. Typically, a fiscal impact analysis involves an examination of both costs and revenues, and that would be for new development. So if you have like, for instance, a residential development, that's going to produce school children, that's going to have a, an impact on the costs as well as the revenues for the school district that would have an impact on the cost to the town as well. That's not quite the case with, with this situation because there's no new revenues that are going to come about as a result of the park development activity. It's not triggering any sort of new revenue stream like a development, a subdivision development, as Sally had talked about, would produce. And so what we looked at was where were the sources of funds coming from to develop the park? What would be the maintenance burdens on the town and village budget in the future to maintain the park? We also looked at whether or not there were going to be any user fees that could We also looked at whether or not there were going to be any user fees that could be charged in the park. And so there were, there were a couple of things that, that we found. One is that currently, there are user fees that are charged for any special areas of the park that are reserved, and that will continue in the future. But at this time, there's no proposal to have any specific user fees imposed for use of the park. The park, after all, is paid for through, through the sources of funds that Sally mentioned. The maintenance, the ongoing maintenance will be paid for out of the current budgets of the town and the village. And so those are things that the community is already paying for, in effect. And so that, that's not going to change. Bruce Washburn, a town board member, did an analysis of what would be the impact on the future maintenance of the additional facilities. And one of the things that he found, based upon reasonable estimates of, of both the costs of providing for maintenance in the park, is that there would not be the need for any additional staff to be hired by the town, that all of the future maintenance of the park, even if, even in the expanded condition, could be accommodated using the, the town staff. Let's see. And then finally, just in terms of the, the overall source of, of money for development of the park, as Sally mentioned, there, there are a number of sources that will be utilized, including the Frost Foundation. Let's see. We have community development funds. The Gardens has contributed some money. Thomas Thompson Trust, and the Town Parkland Fund. And I believe the total estimated funds that were calculated as available were $762,000 for the overall development of the park. And I think that pretty much covers this. Again, the fiscal study is on, on record with the town planning board, and anybody that wants to obtain a copy of it, I'd be glad to provide a copy of that to you. Otherwise, it's available through the Freedom of Information Law. You can go to the town and obtain a copy in that way. Thank you.
Good evening. Rich Messer with Weston and Sampson Engineers. We were hired back in September of 2011 to be the engineer for the park committee and working for the town, to take what was the master plan, as Sally mentioned, and move it on to construction documents for the Phase One construction. So what I'd like to do is just quickly do an overview of what the master plan include, included, and then from there, talk about what the Phase One of the project is going to be, which is based on budgetary constraints and what's available. So if I can probably move back a hair, so everybody can see. Yeah, it's, it's good. I think everybody can pretty much see from there. The, the plan here is shown, because it shows the whole park. And I'll, I'll focus on this in a minute, because here, what you can see is the 2.3 miles of trails, and they're shown in orange, and blue, white, and red, which is an intricate part of the master plan. And the, the trail system starts up in the front part of, of the park, up near the community gardens. So that plan shows the whole park and mainly demonstrates the trail system. The plan directly to my right, I'll, I'll discuss the actual park features that are included in the master plan, and then I'll quickly go to the Phase One components. But there's going to be a, a new entrance that's, that's been mentioned. It's about 125 feet east of the existing entrance into the Star Library. There's about 650 feet of new roadway that's going to be constructed, with a new entrance into the library that kind of sets up for a counterclockwise travel pattern in, in the library, as well as provides a kind of an avenue leading down into the park, which is going to tie into the existing parking area, which is adjacent to the pool. The road will be then picked up again with a new section of road leading into the back portion of the park with a new parking area. This is the existing baseball field and the tennis courts. And part of the park features that you'll be seeing as you come into the park, on the left, is where the community gardens is. It's also known as the meadows. It's an open area that's going to incorporate the, the gardens and just, again, leaves some room for expansion. There's, as you further move in, on the left is the great lawn area, which is part of the archaeological area that has to be restricted, so it's actually going to have a slight fill put on top of it, and left as an open great lawn area for all sorts of activities, frisbee and just whatever, small, you know, activities, and could be even for soccer, or small kid's soccer. As you move further down into the park, on the left is a large synthetic field that's being proposed. It's a championship size, and in, in addition to the actual soccer field layout, it's also going to be set up for lacrosse, which is going to be, needs smaller dimensions, so it'll be lined out on the same field. In addition, there's a, quite a bit more parking that's going to be added, both to the west and to the south of the synthetic field, with two additional proposed Little League fields. As well, on this master plan, there's a skate park area that's been laid out, which is in the, on the, over the homerun fence in the backside of the Little League field, as well as all this leading down into the pavilion that's being proposed. And Frank Mazzarelli will be talking and showing some more details on that. So what's, what's going to be included in, in Phase One? Phase One is going to be based on the first 650 feet leading into the park, which includes full paving, landscaping. There's 14 large sized trees proposed. There's three additional trees proposed to block in and, and landscape the area of the Star Library where the entrance was previously located. There's going to be all sorts of cuts here to put the new road in. There's going to be some clearing and grubbing that's going to be necessary. We're also including eight new light, streetlights leading down along the new access road. I want to show you briefly, let me grab it from back here, the, the new entrance area. There's two proposed stone, stone walls with signs curved on the either side of the new entrance, which is going to have a new sign. It's going to pose, it's going to look like that. So this is, all this information will be up here, so you can look at it closer. But in addition, to do all this work, we're going to be proposing to put in a lot of the infrastructure to be in place, so that the future portions of the park can be constructed without disturbing portions of the park that have been completed. So part of that is, is to putting in conduit and, and water lines, et cetera, that lead down the main road, to facilitate, again, the addition of, of the other components of the park. As part of this process, we're also proposing, there's a large eight inch line that's going to be installed, that's going to be tied into an existing 14, 14 inch line out on, by the road. And at this point, it's going to be changed to a two inch to go all the way down to get to the pavilion, because part of the funding that's being available is, the part of the pavilion has to be construction, constructed, the bathrooms, et cetera, which Frank will talk about. So to facilitate that, we have to get a two inch water line down to the restroom facilities. Let's see, as far as, part of that, too, is there's a new sidewalk, and I do want to show, I think it's on the, it's on the backside of this, so let me briefly show you.
You can't see anything. Your, your back is.
Okay. Well, it's a little tight space, so I apologize.
Turn around.
All right. I know that the planning board needs to see it a little bit, too. So just to briefly touch base on the new entrance road, there's two concepts being looked at. One that fully conforms to the regulations relative to 12-foot wide travel lanes in the sidewalk and lighting, but it's been discussed relative to this park being more of a, a narrower road of 10 feet with a grass strip and a sidewalk with the same type of lighting. So that's one thing that's still under review with the planning boards, but just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what that new entrance road would look like. Also, part of the Phase One includes the portion of the trails, as well as a kiosk, so that I'll show you again, just as a rendering of what that kiosk would look like. And just to give you a feel for where that is, it would be out in the area of, right down in here, is where that, this kiosk is being proposed. So it's just a small structure where you could pick up trail maps and have a few things listed about activities, and maybe some of the things you'd see on a, on a nature walk. That kind of covers the components of the Phase One. I think at this point, if there's anything else that the committee would want to add, or any points that need to be added, I think it becomes open to the planning board at this point. Oh, well, yeah, let me, well, there's going to be a, and Frank, you, you're going to go on and talk a little bit more about the pavilion. The, there's going to be Clivus waterless toilets that are proposed here with a small maintenance area. That's going to be on the existing, there's a paved area that's already there, which we're going to include eventually in the overall master plan. But Frank will go on and talk about the pavilion, which is again at the end of the access road, and is kind of a cornerstone of the park.
My name is Frank Mazzarella. I'm an architect. I'm happy to volunteer 100% of my time in professional services for this project. And I'm involved in this small portion of the project, which is the pavilion, which is located at the end of the kind of vehicular access. And it kind of separates what is the more intense sports activities on the north part of the site, from the more nature preserve and the nature trails and hiking trails further to the south. So, as you can see here, I've kind of developed it more as a gateway or as a threshold, not so much as a building, but someplace where people can walk through and kind of receive people who are, want to have access to the trails, but also provide a place for shelter for all the more intense activities which take place in the park. For example, the children who have just finished a Little League game or a soccer game, and they're gathering near the concession stand. But also, you can see I've broken the building up into two pieces, coinciding with, with the different parts of the program. On the left is where the public restrooms are located. On the right is the concession stand with some storage space. So we're leaving the center of the, the structure open, so it funnels people through, and it provides those views out to the south and to the mountains beyond, into the fields. In terms of materials, I've tried to use or interpret some of the vernacular here in the Hudson Valley. It's a post and, and beam timber frame structure, and intending to use it as well, a kind of modified board and batten for the exterior as well. So attempt to make connection to the existing materials and the local vernacular as well. This site plan, we can see the parking area at the end of the vehicular access, and the pavilion located along this hedge row. For that reason, we've called it a hedge row pavilion. This hedge row is what separates really the sports activities from the hiking trails and the fields beyond. So by situating it there, I said we've interpreted it, intended it to be, become a kind of a threshold or a gateway. There's space in front of the pavilion where outdoor activities could take place, that could even become almost a band shell, where a band is, is playing underneath the pavilion, and people are gathered outside the, in the, in this public plaza. In the back, there's an overlook with a patio and a stone wall where people could be seated, looking out towards the views. And you can see how the hiking trails kind of tie in to that back courtyard. This is a larger scale plan. We can begin to see how the restrooms are located on the left-hand side, the male and female restrooms, with a vestibule access area. The, on the right is the concession stand with storage space, and the center is open like a, one large breezeway, so that people can pass through. The angled walls of the built portions of the structure funnel people through the building. And the courtyard in the middle is an attempt to kind of recreate some of that portion of landscape, which we've taken up by placing this building here. So that is going to become a rain garden with a small tree and some ground cover, so that the inward shaping roof, the rainwater which filters down into that rain garden can be recycled and used for those plants, and it doesn't just become runoff into the rest of the park. We can see the paved area, the public plaza out front, the, the patio in the back with a stone wall, and the nature trails which tie in. This piece on the back is actually a loggia. It's kind of a receiving porch that re, that covers people as they're walking along the trail, so that they could, they can stop and walk through and around the building, or stop to rest along some of the benches. There's also enough room for seating picnic tables as well, so that people, that children are enjoying the sports games can stop afterwards and rest there. But I've also designed it so that these pieces of the program, by the use of these large barn doors, can be closed off in the winter months, when the building is no longer really being intensely used, but that's still a place for, for stopping along the trails, people who are, you know, viewing the winter foliage, or they're doing snowshoeing, they can stop there to rest, or people walking their dogs. In the spring and the fall, when the pavilion is not being used as intensely, would still be able to be used year round. This roof plan just shows the way we are also incorporating solar panels. We are fortunate to have a south-facing roof, and the fact that I've sloped it inward, it slopes out towards the south. So we've spoken with local companies and solar companies, and they have commented that with the use of 12 panels, we would be able to generate 100% of the energy needed for this building, and any excess would be credited to the town's energy bill. It's a program in use through Scenic Hudson. We'd also use that power for the radiant floor. We have a concrete slab in the two portions of the building, so we'd be able to use that to heat hot water as well for the, for the kitchen area of the concession stand, but also the radiant, the coils of the radiant floor. There are two skylights, which provide natural light into the restrooms. And this roof would be a, kind of a zinc-finished standing seam roof, a lot like many of the roofs you see on some of the agricultural or farm buildings here in the valley. So it would be something that would become weathered over time. These are elevations and sections which show a bit what the actual building would look like from the exterior. So this is the front facade, and as I mentioned, we have the restroom portion on the left, the concession stand on the right, with its large window open towards the parking area, the large breezeway in the middle, these structural supports in the center, and the courtyard, central courtyard, which you can see beyond that. A section through the building, we're seeing the back terrace with a stone wall, the loggia, a courtyard in the center of the building, and a front entry porch, and also the public plaza out front where activities could take place. It could be a market or concert, et cetera. This is a view from the back, from the field, and it shows the loggia, how that receives people who are walking along the trails. And we can also view the solar panels on the south-facing roof. And we can also view the solar panels on the south-facing roof. It's a very, this is a very preliminary sketch, has become much more developed in terms of the structural supports of the building, but it just shows how we're seeking for transparency that people can move freely through the building and the use of the wood structure and finishes. So we're trying to incorporate sustainable strategies throughout the whole project in terms of the solar, the, the rain garden, et cetera. But in the landscaping plan, we're also working with the existing elements. The hedge row is actually a very important part of this project. We want to work and try to accentuate those more salient or most interesting features of the site. The hedge row is definitely one of them. So by, by placing this building here and putting a courtyard in, in, in the center, it tends to kind of ameliorate the fact that we're situating a building here. The landscaping surrounding the pavilion will be just a very simple grass or in the back, maybe taller grasses as we go down, slope down towards the, towards the cornfields. The, the, the floor surface, the ground surface would be a permeable gravel material to allow water to filter through as well. There will be a paved portion which, pathway which allow handicap access to the handicap accessible bathrooms and just stone walls and keeping with the existing stone wall along the hedge row for, which would also act as a, as a seating element. In terms of lighting, we even thinking for, to, to allow lighting for activities which might take place at dusk or in the early evening so that the, after the games are over, if people would like to use the facility or the concession stand or there may be certain activities which take place in the evening, so there'd be some low-impact, high-efficiency and low-maintenance fixtures there as well. This is a phasing plan, shows what we have planned for Phase One, which is the structure of the building, meaning the columns, beams and roof structure, and the restroom pavilion, being that we have the grant from, the block grant from Dutchess County. Planning, we were required to have a portion of the, this portion of the building built first, and after that, we would continue hopefully immediately with the concession portion of the, of the project, the back patio with this loggia and stone wall and the solar panels which form part of the second phase. So in terms of diversity, I think a project, what one attempted to incorporate all the different aspects of the community here so that not only would this be someplace for the kids and the, involved in the intense sporting activities, but also help, you know, be available to the aged or people who are just using the, the trails to walk a dog or, or to see, you know, to go snow shoeing or just viewing the, the foliage, a place to bring people together.
My name is Jeff Romano. I'm Chair of the Town of Rhinebeck Conservation Advisory Board, and I have two statements which I would like to read into the record, which are an overview of the site conditions and draft comments on the LWRP. Dear Chairman Miller and Chairman Trimble, the Conservation Advisory Board would like to thank the planning boards for holding these public hearings and considering the preservation and conservation of the natural, historic and agricultural resources of the proposed park. The Town of Rhinebeck has identified the parcel as being in a priority conservation area where habitat loss would be especially detrimental. Because of the park's unique characteristics of biodiversity as well as being within walking distance of the village, conservation action will result in ensuring the preservation of important public lands for generations to come. The park parcel is within the Mill Road Priority Conservation Area and the local front, and the local waterfront revitalization area. The Mill Road Priority Conservation Area consists of some of the greatest habitat diversity in the town, including significant wetlands, intermittent woodland pools, a large forested stretch of the Landsman Kill, gentle rolling landscapes, numerous pockets of clay soils that support unusual habitats, valuable agricultural land supporting one of the last dairy farms in Rhinebeck, large areas of open space, a significant archaeological find estimated to be thousands of years old, and a FEMA floodplain, all of which are detailed in draft reports that we forwarded to the planning boards. Some specific recommendations by Hudsonia in the 2006 townwide study are as follows but are not limited to. Maintain broad corridors between habitats and broad buffers. Maintain good intact upland habitats, connections between wetlands within wetland complexes. Protect the intermittent woodland pools in their conservation areas. Maintain critical terrestrial habitat. Eliminate pesticide use. Protect nesting areas. Consider the impacts of water quality, hydrology and habitat disturbance. Identify high priority areas for special protection. Minimize impacts from new and existing roads. Prohibit runoff from roads in developed areas into the intermittent woodland pools. Maintain water quality and quantity at predisturbance levels. Avoid creating stormwater retention basins and other artificial depressions. Schedule the construction activities to occur outside the peak amphibian movement periods of spring and early summer. Protect the integrity of the stream habitats. Establish a protective buffer zone extending at least 160 feet on either side of all streams in the watershed. Buffer zones should remain naturally vegetated and undisturbed by construction, conversion to impervious surfaces, agriculture and livestock use, pesticide and fertilizer application, and installation of septic leach fields or other waste disposal facilities. The park parcel is a spectacular and significant environment with a prominent view shed and a vibrant environment which Rhinebeck has designated for all citizens to enjoy and learn from. We thank the planning boards and the park committee for carefully considering these facts as we move forward. I also have a draft version of the, of the LWRP. The area of the park that's located in town is also located within the local waterfront revitalization program. This includes the location of the proposed accessory building. The LWRP is a planning document prepared by the Rhinebeck community and recognized by the state of New York. It's based on 44 policies of the New York State Coastal Management Program. These policies address such issues as flooding, fish and wildlife, energy management, development, historic and scenic resources, agricultural lands, wetlands and water and air resources specific to Rhinebeck. The CAB is responsible for reviewing projects before the planning board for consistency within these 44 policies. Because of the proposed location of the playing fields, the CAB recognizes the necessity of an accessory building to provide concessions and restroom facilities. The proposed building is cited at a natural transition point between the developed and the undeveloped areas of the park. Our committee advises a low-impact, off-the-grid building utilizing the latest in green technology. We advise an educational program in the building highlighting the unique biodiversity and scenic, historical, archaeological and agricultural importance of this land. Such a program would be a great asset to the community and provide support for conserving the undeveloped areas of the park. The CAB will write a formal LWRP review and provide an advisory opinion when the park application is complete. We look forward to working with the park committee and realizing their goal in providing a park for all members of the Rhinebeck community. Thank you.
I think that's it for the presentation. I think at this point, what we normally do is we open it up to members of the planning boards, questions of the applicant. Anyone who'd like to go first? Nobody? Okay. Well, at this point, we will open it up to the public. We have a sign-up sheet. As we said, we've asked you to please try and keep your comments to three minutes. We realized you might go a little, little beyond that. We do have a egg timer we don't wish to use. We know that you're going to get a little bit into other areas of concern you have about the park and things like that. Please understand that our two planning boards can only deal with the applications before us as were addressed tonight. Other comments perhaps should be before other groups. They'll certainly be on the record, but please understand, they probably won't be taken into consideration, but we have to decide unless they are germane specifically to the applications before us as they currently exist. And first speaker, Robert Murray.
Thank you, Michael. My name is Robert Murray. I am a resident. I'm a past planning board member myself. I'm the owner of an engineering company, a father of five children, one, two soccer kids, and I'm a, I'm a big volunteer here in town. I look forward to, I'm, I'm happy to have volunteered in the past, including solar projects and such. I'm looking forward to volunteer in the future, including, I hope, development and work on the new park. I have a letter here, I'm going to do what's not natural to me and try and read from it, but, and then maybe have a comment or two. We had a very lengthy meeting last December. Meeting minutes were never issued, I'm not sure why. Many people who spoke out in public really kind of expected to be responded to. I would encourage the planning board to explain to the community why that was not, that was not made public. I'm not sure, it's the only set of meeting minutes that haven't been published to your website. So I'm going to give you a copy of this letter and... I have an image with the letter that I, that I only made, I thought also we would have a projector or the opportunity to. I would encourage the planning board and town board in the future, and I'll even volunteer the projector. These images would be great, sir, because I don't want to see my hand in the letter. If you'd like to add a speech to, add to my letters as a reference, you can pass each around and then keep it to yourself if you dare be selfish. Dear Town and Village Rhinebeck Planning Board Committee, Committees, actually. This is the first time they've met as a group and we all appreciate that. Now, I'm here today to speak in support of continued assessment of recreation needs, current and future, and the consideration of expanded recreation fields at the TMP if and when the community demonstrates these needs. There are currently five soccer fields and five baseball fields in five different locations. There's currently no lacrosse field. I think that the users of all these spaces, spaces appreciate the use very much and are hopeful they might continue to use these spaces in the future. Many of us volunteer to make improvements to these properties even though they are not owned by the town or village. The Town of Rhinebeck adopted a master plan, not to be confused with what is the site plan and programming that is being referred to the master plan, an actual document labeled "master plan" in January of 2009. It is our continued understanding that this plan was the culmination of much effort to study the needs of our community with regards to the newly expanded park and to prioritize these needs. This plan, along with the restrictions imposed by the 12/28/2006 conservation easement, offer the guidelines for development and use of the Thompson-Mazzarella Park. Just a couple of notes. The master plan, page two, notes that the new recreation fields will take approximately 17 acres of active agricultural lands out of production. And the town board accepted, adopted that in consideration of the needs and, and at the time, and, and which continue, I suspect. Paragraph 3.2 in the conservation easement. Now, the conservation easement actually had a couple of variations. It was initially issued by Winnekee to the town and village and it resembled to, to some degree a land preservation and open space easement. In fact, the county's not, the county is not really in the business of buying land and giving it away so no one can use it. So the, the county, in fact, by the end of, by, in fact, in December 28th, 2006, made amendments to and agreed with Winnekee and the village and the town to a revised version. And I wanted to read, Lucy was nice enough to talk about, I think you were actually reading from the section labeled "purpose" of the easement, but under "use," it says "The property shall be used solely as a public park devoted to outside, outdoor recreational uses, both active and passive, and to the extent consistent therewith agricultural, forestry, horticulture and related purposes." I think the, I think many people, there's, there's a, there's a thought that there is, there's a preservation easement. In fact, well, let me read the rest of it. "It would appear that all the currently proposed uses are, are mentioned or implied in the conservation easement. However, the easement clearly prioritizes recreational uses over agricultural use or preservation. In other words, if the community demonstrates a need for recreation space, the easement supports prioritizing recreation over agriculture. Essentially, the conservation easement serves to protect the recreation use of this park in perpetuity. I strongly encourage the planning boards, the village trustees, the town board and the park committee to enjoy the knowledge that the conservation easement defines and protects the use of the park. It permits agricultural use when consistent with our agricultural needs." Now, that's the end of my letter. Many people have talked about, well, I think there's a strong desire not to use certain areas because there's a natural divide. However, Sally noted earlier that we had to change the size and number of athletic fields. I think, I think it's understandable why there was this archaeologically sensitive area, but I for one feel that the, that the actions and philosophy of preservation is in direct contrast to what the easement says. To strictly read the easement, one might think that, well, you have to lose a little more agricultural land to permit the use of recreation. Having said that, I think Michael DeCola for one and a number of other people in the past have, have, have suggested something very positive, and that is, look, we have a long life to live together and this park will be here for our, our combined use for many, many years. It's my hope that, that everyone continues to reassess and to be considerate of each other and that we develop what's on the plan now, but that, that Winnekee and the town and the village are open to flexibility in the future when and if the community shows and demonstrates those needs. Thank you all very much.
Next, Stephen Cook.
Thank you very much. I'm Stephen Cook from the Star Library. We are the immediate neighbor to the Thomas Thompson Sally Mazzarella Park. We're very enthusiastic about this project, but we do have a couple of concerns that have come up over the course of various plannings. For one thing, the main entry driveway has been moved and the new entryway now comes into the Star Library at a rather steep drop. And one of the things that we are concerned about, and Bill Dowden and I, our, our insurance agent walked around, and one of the things we're concerned about is the water runoff from this drop. It now will come right down onto our property and onto our backyard, and I have not seen, perhaps there is, but I have not seen anything to say that any environmental aspect has been examined pursuant to where that groundwater runoff is going to, is going to come. We're just concerned that there's our ground floor with our local history collection and a lot of material right there. Also, in this plan, we will be losing between three and five parking spaces, and in various plans, some of them are restored, some of them, we have had discussions or questions have, have been raised that we might not be able to replace some of the spots, particularly where our current entrance, where Traver Lane is. That is actually a site where with a new stone wall that is to be built, with a cut for the sidewalk that is extant, with the negotiations that we're working on and trying to get some trees planted there and some green space, we would see that as a logical place for a couple of parking spaces. And I would just like to point out that the front of our building, as designed by architect Lewis Turpin, actually faces east. The building does not actually face Rhine Cliff Road. So there are a number of, we've heard a number of things about parking and facing the street, facing where the building is, and I would just like to encourage plans that we would be able to get a couple of parking spaces out there by the road. And also, as the direction of traffic is reversed now around the building, one of our parking spaces in the back is so angled for the current traffic flow. And the way that that is angled, that would no longer be a parking space, so we would, we would lose that out as well. And we're also concerned a little bit about the location of the, well, current Traver Traver Lane where it will be blocked off on its way down towards the town park. Uh, we find that, uh, there's a good synergy between those using the park and those using the library and we would just want to make sure that, uh, as that, that road has been described as being abandoned, uh, with some boulders to keep traffic, uh, from, from driving there, we would just like to make sure that in the summer and in the winter that that is maintained as a conduit for people to use, uh, the park if they happen to be at the library or use the library if they happen to be down at the park. We have done a lot of, uh, programs this summer with the rec park, uh, youth and traveling back and forth a lot and as we see these plans, uh, develop, we just want to keep that synergy that we have developed with, uh, the users of the rec park, the rec park kids, uh, and the library patrons, uh, going. Thank you very much.
Right now, we're sort of pushing five minutes on the talks, which isn't bad, but you know, just sort of try and keep it tight if you can.
It definitely won't be three minutes. Uh, my name's Chris Chesney. I'm a village resident, but tonight I'm, uh, here on behalf of the Frost Memorial Fund. I'm a trustee of the Frost Memorial Fund and several years ago, the committee came before us with a proposal, um, for a project and asked for a grant from the Frost Memorial Fund, which we were very interested in and agreed to support the development, continued development. Bruce had, I think, started those already, but the continued development of the, uh, trail system through there and the committee agreed, uh, in honor of Benson and Barbara Frost to name that trail system in their honor. We've been very pleased with the project and the work that the committee's done. Um, we're also very pleased we were proposed with the kiosk that will be established, um, there as indicated by Rich earlier and we'll have naming on there for Benson and Barbara Frost who were, anybody who needs to know about them, they're a long family in the community, even have roads named after them. So, um, I, on a personal note, I give a lot of credit. Um, I think I was president of the library when this all started and the purchase of the land and there was a lot of work together, so it's been a long time. Um, but I give you a lot of credit for putting, uh, the project together, working on it so long and finally having a plan before the planning board. Good luck.
Thank you.
Andy Imparati?
Uh, David, okay, that's for right now, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good evening, Chairman Miller, Chairman Trimble and board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I'm very excited about this project and I as well have some concerns. Again, my name is Linda Murray. I'm a Rhinebeck resident. I'm a native of Dutchess County. I'm a full-time working mother of two young children, one of whom is passing some things out. A volunteer coach and I'm also a practicing attorney. During the past year, I've been actively trying to encourage the park committee to add more recreational fields to this site. The need for more new recreational fields is not based solely on my observations or my opinion alone. The town's adopted master plan requires more new rec fields on this site. The master plan concluded that more new rec fields will serve the needs of our growing athletic community. Towards that end, it, just the opening statement of our chairman here, "The role of the planning board is also to ensure that the comp plan, the master plan and the constraints of the easement are complied with." Um, just as a field, uh, ju- just as a field house wouldn't be allowed here, a skyscraper wouldn't be allowed here. It's not permitted. The primary use must remain what the easement says, which is new recreational fields, uh, sorry, passive and active recreation. Consistent with the master plan, hundreds of residents petitioned the park committee to add more new rec fields to the site last December. Sadly, it appears that based on what I've seen presented tonight, their voices aren't being heard and the research done in preparing the master plan years ago on the needs of this town seemed to have been forgotten. The current site plan is inconsistent with the master plan. It's also inconsistent with what the planning board adopted in the EAF in 2009 and the conservation easement. I urge you, members of the planning board, to ask the committee the following five questions in this regard when you're analyzing this site plan. One, and it's on the form I passed out, "How does the site plan comply with page two of the 2009 master plan adopted by the town board?", which Robert has, Robert Murray has already quoted. And this is a direct quote, "The new recreational fields will take approximately 17 acres of active ag lands out of production. The rec park consists of 84 acres. Only 5.4 acres are devoted to active recreational fields. This is less than 32% of the adopted master plan." Question two, "How does this publicly funded project reflect the community's need for more new recreational fields?" And I highlight new recreational fields because it's the exact language in the master plan, as expressed by the 250 names on the petition asking for new recreational fields.